Council regular meeting from Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. All rights for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor King?
Here.
Councilwoman Diner?
Here.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Here.
Councilwoman Emo? Councilwoman Doomer?
Here.
Coram being present, if everybody's had an opportunity to review the agenda, are there any objections to the agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, it's approved by unanimous consent. Everybody's had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any objections to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, it is passed by unanimous consent. This time, if you'd like to make public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, try to limit your comments to three minutes. Moving on to the first item for consideration, Bill number twenty five dash two five, an ordinance amending section four six dash three three four, stop intersections of the code of ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a code change update to allow the city to replace a stop sign on the northbound lane of Mulberry Street and Trail Ridge Drive, this is the one that we talked about relocating. We're gonna go ahead and leave it where it has kind of that eastbound, in the long run, we'll probably want that to be a four-way intersection, let's fully develop. But the code does indicate that when a stop sign is present, so there won't be any penalties, so it's just adding that to allow us to change that to the northbound.
There any questions for staff on Bill twenty five dash two five?
No.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this bill before we move forward on it? Alright, do I have a motion on Bill number two five dash two five, an ordinance amending section four six dash three three four, stop intersections of the code of ordinances?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill number twenty five dash twenty five, an ordinance amending section forty six three three four, stop intersections of the code of ordinances.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on Bill number two five dash two five, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Diner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Doomer?
Yes.
Bill passes. Next item is Bill number two five dash two six, an ordinance amending the fee schedule for park reservations.
Thank you, Mayor, this is what we talked about at our last council meeting at the work session, just formalizing in our fee schedule what the fees will be for Lion Shelter, Brown's Arm Shelter, the Amphitheater Shelter, the Grand Pavilion at City Park, Ludwig and Gopert Foundation, or Gopert Pavilion, and the pickleball courts. We did not write into code what the fees will be for the tournament rentals. Nothing indicated that they had to, it said that the director has that ability, if we wanted to write that in into the future, we'll write that. But these were the more urgent, as we're getting ready to open.
Alright, any questions from council on Bill number twenty five dash two six?
I have a couple. The amphitheater itself, are we going to be renting that out? I know we discussed it last time.
We did talk about that one, I only did this as a rental for like an individual. What we really envisioned with that one, especially in that rate, is like small birthday parties. We can have a larger discussion on like full rental. That is not reflected right now.
My next question was, the prime hours, what will determine the prime hours for the pickleball?
Yeah, so the way that I wrote it in this proposed bill was in the whereas clauses, I said like right now it assumes Monday through Friday, five to ten, Saturdays and Sundays is prime, but it does allow us the flexibility to make those changes. I just didn't want us to get tied too terribly closely if we needed to make modifications of it.
Yeah, I figured it'd be seasonal too.
It might.
But there are lights, so.
Yeah. And we'll have that ability with the scheduling software too, to kind of make those tweaks.
And that was my next question, is where are we at the app, are we getting the app all ready?
It'll be ready to go on Friday.
Sweet, awesome.
At least for the pickleball courts on both facilities, the rest of the pavilions, the facilities, those are gonna be coming online, we'll win our reservations. Pickleball courts, unfortunately, they'll be ready on Friday.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have to pay for the app to be on our phones, or is that a?
It's all web-based, so I'm learning as we go, I think the app is a free app, all the QR codes, they link directly to their website, so.
So how are we gonna notify the public of this app?
We just got notification, Kylie and I have been working for that this week already. The Rec Tech is sending us a lot of their programming, a lot of their publications that they send out, and that way we can use and modify those to our language and then send those out to the public. There's a free link to login, sign up, sign up your whole family, that kind of thing, so we'll be up on the website by then, this week.
Will it be linked to like the city's webpage, I mean like, so you can go to Pleasant Hill City and?
It's all integrated, so it'll probably be a landing page, but it's have Rec Tech, but it's gonna be seamless between our page, so whenever you click on the link, it'll actually, it looks like it's our page, but it actually goes to their platform.
I'm excited for it.
Any other questions? Any comments for the public on Bill twenty five dash two six?
Can I ask a question? Just a quick question, because this is really pretty cool. I know, hey, Carla Murray, three hundred North Amphitheater Street, Pleasant Hill, I know you guys had talked about doing something consistent with nonprofits, so maybe it's fifty percent, whatever you guys decide. This app is really cool, will it be able to book, can nonprofits book through that as well, without doing special events? Applications, can we put in like our five oh one C three number to verify our nonprofit status, can we book that way as well, without having to do all the special programs?
Can we start with that?
I mean, my guess is no, but we can look into that.
My guess would be because you're asking for something, or we said it, that it just come before council. There has been, council has talked recently about wanting to see people come in and ask about things like that, so that we know who these groups are, so probably, even if it's not a special event application, it'll probably be just come to council for, just to talk about the consideration. Okay? Alright. No other questions, do I have a motion for Bill number twenty five dash two six?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill number twenty five dash twenty six, an ordinance amending the fee schedule for park reservations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for Bill number twenty five dash two six, an ordinance amending the fee schedule for park reservations. Can I get a roll call, please?
For sure, Councilwoman Diner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Doomer?
Yes.
Bill twenty five dash two six passes. Next item is a preliminary report, twenty twenty five Cass County Fair.
Thank you, Mayor, at this point, as we are just pretty much one week out from the Cass County Fair, the only thing that I have to update you on right now are the revenues that we received and how it performed next to the budget. So what I've provided each of you is a breakdown of the revenues that are associated with the Cass County Fair and the Special Events Fund, and the year-to-date actual that we have received so far is thirty six thousand dollars ahead of where we thought our budgeted revenues would be. We do anticipate booth fees that we'll get at the end of the budget year for next year's fair, so we really anticipate it will be forty four thousand dollars ahead of where we thought our revenues would be by the end of the fiscal year. Our beginning fund balance in that fund, it was almost five thousand dollars better than what we anticipated. We don't really anticipate total budgeted expenses exceeding where we had them budgeted. I did break out that we have fifty five thousand dollars in grounds maintenance, and we are really confident that we will be able to make our first year debt payment for the bleachers out of that budget amount as well. And so we are really anticipating where we thought that fund would have sixty thousand dollars at the end of the year, end of this budget year. We really think that number's gonna be a hundred and eighty thousand. So, so far, things are a little good.
Would you explain the ground maintenance expense, that fifty five thousand?
Yeah.
Well, just so that it's a little, it's clearer than mine.
So basically, that was just a budgeted amount that was included in this fiscal year for improvements and updates around the fairgrounds. So that was going into the fair, including some electrical improvement updates that we knew needed to be done. We knew we had, even before the bleachers, we knew we needed some additional fencing and temporary fencing for like crowd control reasons, so we had budgeted for those amounts. There was, every year, there's just general maintenance, so Tony and our Parks Department and our Public Works Department, you know, we use material to put down the like dust control for safety reasons, you know. So several years ago, I mean, we noticed as traffic was in and out, it was so dusty, and we would spend a lot of time keeping it watered. We felt it was more effective and efficient, we spent some money, and we used dust control similar to what they put on the county roads, if you, you know, opt in for that. So like there's materials for that, every year, we have to bring in some additional like ad lime, it's not really additional, but it's just a level off, like where we put our tents for the livestock shows, so every year, there are some maintenance things that go into, I'll just talk about it. Every year, there are maintenance things that go into obviously the grounds and the assets there. We kind of talked about originally, we had budgeted for materials to make some of the improvements to the existing bleachers that were staying, and to do the announcers booth at the rodeo, and then ultimately, we got that in a donation from Midwest Lumber, so again, there was some savings there. I will tell you, there were some things that came up that we did not budget for, but again, as Shelby said, we feel strongly that we'll still stay within that fifty five thousand dollars of the maintenance. There were some additional electric issues that had to be addressed, that again, were not originally a part of the electrical improvements that we need, and fixes that we needed to make. Our refrigerator trailer that we use to store like our concession stand items in, the compressor went out of it, so we had to rent one. But again, there were some other savings in areas, so that's what the fifty five thousand dollars helps to cover, it's just the needed improvements. The biggest one this year, we knew of going in, was going to be those electrical, there was electrical improvements and electrical fixes from our incident, the year prior, that we had on Friday night.
Okay. I had some questions about the bleachers themselves, people have asked me, so Hanson, right, did the bleachers, am I remembering that correctly? Did they put them in also, or did our staff put them in, like install, installed stuff?
I'll just talk about it. Our staff did help, so we actually have that, I have communications back with them, they helped for two days, three days. For three days, they did help, so we actually are putting a dollar amount to that, to then submit to them as part of that final invoice, so it hasn't been paid, because the bleachers actually got delayed in production. And so it put their timeline very tight to be able to get them done by our deadline, and so we offered our assistance to ensure that they would get done, but we kept track of our individual hours, and we're putting those dollar amounts to them before we do our final settlement.
Okay. You got the end of the bleachers?
Got it.
It fell off the first night. So that's like.
Was that in the shop?
I think so.
Any other questions from council? Do you think by second meeting in August, we'll have a better look at the numbers? Because I kind of want to do that as a work session, talk about the fair.
Probably, yeah.
Close?
Yeah, I think so. We'll go by our idea of expenses, we're still getting some invoices that are coming in.
I know, I sound a lot of chairs. Alright, any comments from the public before we move on?
Question. Sorry. Carla, I can, if you could just add it to the work session, I would respectfully ask that we also address, we borrowed four hundred and ninety thousand, we spent according to the invoices and everything that I saw anyway, around three hundred and seventies, three hundred and eighty thousand, which will be less than that, of course, because we're gonna charge Hanson's worth back for some labor, so I would like to know what we're going to spend that extra hundred and twenty, hundred, whatever it is, that eight thousand dollars on, versus what we borrowed.
Thank you. Alright. Staff reports. Amy?
Since the fair, well, my audit was that week, they came in that week, and then last week, I had to do a lot of my audit. They had a lot of questions for me to answer, and then I filled in for my utility bill, and she took vacation last week. And then I put in the paper, public hearing for our tax levy, we're gonna have a public hearing on August twenty fifth, that second meeting in August.
What's a public hearing now?
Tax levy.
Oh.
We do every August, kind of.
We've got our fall registrations open for our sports right now, the baseball softball numbers are a little bit low, so we went ahead and extended that to this next Friday, so if you know anybody that's looking to sign up, please promote it for us, I would like to get those records up, especially, and we bring all these new facilities online. The fall baseball and softball programs will mostly be played in the existing, the Yule Field, the Girls North, Girls South, because of the football programs and the other fall sports, we use the East and West, most of the youth fields this season, we could definitely use some help getting those numbers up. Also, today, we put out pool pass discounts for the remainder of the pool season, so family passes are down to fifty dollars for the remainder of the season, individual passes are down to twenty five dollars. And also, just for clarity on the, our findings on the pool surface, we did, Fine Cut came out and put four exploratory holes around the diving board, and in the area where we thought that recirculation line was at, we did find some sediment near the diving boards, we went ahead and took it out of service, we took the entire structure down today. We've got it stored offsite, so that is not gonna be in for the season, just for sake of sake. The subgrade was about an inch below the concrete surface, so it's kind of like a floating slab at that level, so that much weight wasn't a good idea. And also, you know, our exploratory hole, we did find the existing line, we know it's broken somewhere, we didn't find actual break in it, but we found the material size and, you know, material and the size, so we can actually work out the fittings for it, so as soon as the pool goes out of service for the season, we'll make the repairs there, and over at the fountain sprays, where we know we have the two leaks at. So we use some, we're moving on the concrete deck, replace those lines, and then replace everything after the fact, but we'll get everything back in service ready for pool season next year.
May I ask you something?
Yeah.
Maybe one other. Alright, you're up.
Citizens Academy registration opened today, that'll start the twenty first of August. Everything went really well for us as an agency, as a city, we didn't have a lot of, you know, people down there causing issues or anything like that, everybody was very vocal, so that was a good deal. Really proud of the crew that we have there, at the department as well as event staff and all the volunteers, Wednesday night, we got some lighting come in, you know, probably thought it was best not to have people on, you know, forty-foot tall apparatus while lighting was, you know, starting to be active, so. We, that went off really well, we actually, I think, were about ten minutes ahead of what the math said we should be, getting everybody safely off of the grounds into vehicles and out, so, to those everybody's fair job, we enjoyed it, so.
Kylie?
Along with everyone else, I was at full fair mode two weeks ago, and then all of last week, I was out for a family wedding, so I'm just now back today, kind of getting back to the swing of things. Just gearing up for the park's soft opening, and kind of a busy time of year with everything happening, so just making sure everything's on social media and website.
When is the park's soft opening?
I pull up a soft opening, I don't really know what we're calling it, but it will be this Friday.
I don't know what time, I don't know what time now, I'll let you guys know.
Nikki?
I don't. I don't have actually a whole lot more to add right now as well, obviously, again, the fair was very successful, it was, I spent some time talking with folks that came in, kind of finding out where they came from, how they heard about it, so that we can kind of gauge our marketing as we move forward, and what worked, you know, or maybe what didn't work, and how we're best getting our message out. But again, cannot thank our volunteers enough, you know, every time you turn around, there was somebody, you know, overdoing something, and it just still continues to fascinate me that the people that take off of their full-time paying jobs to help every single year, that are just committed to ensuring the success of the event, it really sometimes, it's just mind-boggling to me, but it's a great collaboration, and again, as Captain Clay indicated, you know, we had one small weather incident, right, wrong, or indifferent, it's sometimes on our less busier night of the week, and it was kind of a good practice almost of, you know, should we have something major happen on a bigger event night, it was amazing to see how the groups worked together to ensure the safety of not only spectators, participants, fairgoers, staff, all of the above, so again, I'm just so grateful for all that worked together to make this happen. I was also counting my blessings, I have very good friends that are volunteers at the Flat County Fair, and they did not get the fun weather that we, you know, I mean, while we had some heat, what they had to overcome this past week to pull their fair off was, it would have been kind of a nightmare. But anyway, with that, I was out last week, but not on vacation, I attended with Bob and Martha Drazny, the Missouri Main Street Annual Conference. It, once again, this was the second time I've been able to attend this conference, once now here with the city, and once at my former city, and it is just a refreshing conference to hear from others, and see what they're doing, and get some inspiration, not only in our downtown area, but just as a community as a whole. I had some, an opportunity on the last evening during the awards presentation to sit with the group from downtown Warrensburg, and get some inspiration from them on some different things that they've got going on. They had one of their community partners was recognized for some collaboration work, which again, I mean, it goes back, I mean, I just feel like I could, we could have probably submitted the application because we do so many of the same similar things, so it was just good to have some networking, and hear some really good speakers, and get some different ideas, so it was a good event. I don't know if Bob has any other different, we took our, the schedule and split it up, and so we really honestly didn't see each other much, because again, there was only, well, really, three of us, and then Bob's wife attended to help us out, so we would try to break out and attend the different sessions, concurrent sessions, so that none of us were sitting in the same room, and we could gather as much information, so we really did spend a whole heck of a lot of time, because we were all going our separate ways, but it still was very informative, and excited to see, you know, like I said, different things that we can do to implement, or to just use other ideas from other cities, and we shared some of the ideas that we've got going on here with others as well, so that is it, I will just give a heads up, I am out of the office beginning next Monday, and I will take my time off then with my family as we attend the Missouri State Fair, and we move our list to college, so I'll be out for two weeks.
Did you get a lot of comments about the bleachers?
I was a lot.
I did the people moving several nights, and I cannot tell you how many people were appreciative of the new bleachers and the people movers.
Yeah, the people movers were a, that was, Missy and Tony worked together to get some additional sponsorship, like in-kind sponsorships of those pieces of equipment, and I will say the same thing, we heard a lot of positive feedback from folks, again, just the hospitality that our fair offers, we've heard from our, we used a new motorsports promoter this year for our motocross and our Tuesday and Wednesday night event, and I have an email, I haven't even been able to share it with the staff yet, that just says it was the best fair board he's ever worked with, and he was very appreciative of the opportunity to partner with us, and yes, we had, saw numerous, our rodeo promoter had shared it on their social media, and there was a lot of positive feedback on it, on the enhanced seating, and again, many that said like it's one of their favorite rodeos to come to every single year, and so I feel overall, again, we had some issues, you know, we had to, we talked about doing some sort of maybe like the black netting, I call it windscreen, to go along the back, because we did have kids, of course, crawling underneath, and then they'd go and sit in the front, and, you know, or underneath the bleachers, and so there's some things that we can improve on, but overall, just the safety of it, and from my aspect of it, it was just a huge less worry that, you know, we had of just knowing that we had a safe space for our spectators to come in. So, so far, we've had a lot of ton of positive, positive feedback.
I do know that the local government and state rep people that we had there for opening ceremonies, heard a lot of good comments. Ray Moore and McKeeler, both their people were like, you guys got this working well. And I know that little Tom Circo was very impressed with all that stuff, so he's sorry that Ray Moore doesn't have one.
I, and I guess, I mean, I can just comment, because it seems a little awkward, so we started two years ago, that, because we were, that, two years ago specifically, we started meeting at like four o'clock of an afternoon, like all of the, like the heads of kind of each, you know, area, whether it's a staff or even a volunteer, like our gate people and things, like we would meet at four o'clock to kick off the night, and go through logistics and answer any questions, and we started that as a result of having some weather, expected weather events move in, and then quickly realized like it was very beneficial. I will say this year, we, I would put out the agenda we set and meet at four, and like we were done in five minutes, and I'm like, what am I missing? Like what are we doing wrong? And it was Chief Wright, who just said like, it's crazy, but like, things come up and things happen, but it's kind of gotten to where we kind of have a well-oiled machine, you know, where we just, you know, there's been new things done, or enhancements made, or, you know, hey, this worked well, and so we just continue to build on that, and so like, what used to be those first year, like it was a thirty, forty-five minute meeting as we worked through the logistics and things, we've now taken all of that, you know, that follow-up from each year, and we build it in as we, you know, plan for the following year, and so literally, our meetings this year would last maybe five, ten minutes, just go over the highlights, and then I shoot out, you know, a message to everybody on duty, like this is what you need to know for the night, and we were good to go, and so it's just, I think it's, there's planning that goes into that, then, kind of one of those things, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail, and we're not there, you know, we've got, we work so well with EMS, and the fire department, and on the logistics of, you know, where we park apparatuses, and yet, we don't move out certain apparatuses, if we have issues, we take a smaller vehicle so that we're not maneuvering large equipment around people, and again, just the improvements, this new fencing that we put in, like a portable, like what I call crowd control fencing. So there was a time, and it terrified our former administrator, Mark Randall, like the horses, when they were preparing to go in the arena, were just out amongst the people, and it was a safety concern, and so now, again, we have volunteers that park the contestant trailers in this most methodical, strategic way, so that we can maximize the space that we have, but then now, we also keep using that fencing, all of the contestants are back away, so you don't have animals, you know, intermingling, and when we did the addition to the arena last year with the extension of it, again, the way that the animals come in, they come in from the west side versus the east side, so again, it keeps the animals away, the horses, I say animals, the horses, away from people and potential liabilities, you know, both for the rider and our spectator. So again, every year, we just seem to kind of do things a little bit better, and we really take our after-action shutdown serious, and then implement the things that we saw, you know, that need to be improved the next year, so then, like I said, this year, our everyday meeting was maybe ten minutes long, so, yeah.
Public safety, we call that organized chaos.
Yeah.
That's what it is, it's organized chaos. Alright, Shelby?
Okay, so I, if this is on, I don't talk as loud as Nikki, so I may need it. Okay, I have a whole host of things, because I'm reporting both for Missy, Tony, and myself. So one is that the Price Chopper offsite sewer plans have been approved, so they can start construction. That's mostly gonna be on the school district property, but then also across the street to the Price Chopper site, so constructions should begin soon. They've submitted their site plan for the grocery store portion of the building, we've done a first review, and the comments are back with the applicant. We have a right-of-way permit for a new fiber service in town, we've done our first review, comments are back with the applicant on that one as well. Our, I don't think we mentioned this at the last meeting, but our building inspector has resigned, and so his last day will be August fifteenth, the job is posted. We are also prepping for our next water and sewer, water and wastewater bond issue, we're looking at a three point five million dollar issue, and I don't know when we're actually gonna have that before council.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I was gonna, I don't know what Jimmy said, we have a call Monday.
Yeah, we have a call on Monday for our ratings call on it, so probably late August, maybe September, before you guys do the official issuance of that one.
August, maybe September, before you guys do the official issuance of that one. The police department will be launching a medical reserve and cert team that should be launching in the fall. They are partnering with the school district and a 501(c)(3) that the school district kind of has, that's being established, and by the bylaws of that 501(c)(3), the police department and the fire department will have a representative on that, on that board. So just kind of be aware that more information we'll be having on that one. I have signed the household hazardous waste agreement, so residents can begin using that service as of August 1st. They did prorate everything, so that was all approved. So I just got that today, so we will be putting out notification of your, what your options are.
It's on my list to ask.
There you go, it's done. Okay, let me see. Um, so last week during our substantial rainfall in a short amount of time, one of the areas that we had, kind of our short-term flash flooding event, was actually Pine and Taylor Street. Happened Thursday night, I believe. That is an area that we are making improvements, some stormwater improvements, really related to the police department project. During that time period, we were trying to jet and clean out some of the storm boxes and weren't able to. So on Tony's list of projects scheduled, it was actually last week, but I'm guessing they're going to delay them, he will be cutting some new storm inlets in that area, so that he has the ability to jet that area and clean it out. So I think that should be relatively short-lived. We did the same thing at the city park. We had some stormwater issues off of the street, and were able to find the right inlets that we had, cleaned them out, jetted them, haven't had any issues since then. So that one, I think, will be going away relatively quickly. Okay, so the last one I think I have is the, the parks. So we did, sorry, we did our punch crews or punch walks today of all three park sites. There are still some things that need to be done, but we still feel really confident, believe it or not, that we will be able to open them on Friday. So what, we call it soft opening, if you will, so what we really intend to do is do a ribbon cutting with, you know, the individuals that are involved, with council members, sometime in the morning, and then by noon, have all sites open to the public. Obviously, there's still going to be landscaping that's still left to be done, there's signage that still needs to be put up, but in terms of functional use of the space, we are ready to turn it back over to, to the public and that they can use it. We've worked through issues with the splash pad, so it, I got to press that button multiple times today to get it running. So splash pad's good, playgrounds are all good, we have some touch-up paint and like minor punch items. I think city park, they were still finishing up some guttering today. There's some stormwater runoff that we had in that amphitheater. Last week, they're going to regrade some of that area to divert it around there, because it was really just creating a pool and getting it into the areas that it needs to be. So really, other than some landscaping establishment, we should be pretty good to go. They were doing the chip and seal at City Lake this afternoon. I have not been back up there to...
They got primed all, all the way up to the main entrance. They don't have the entrance where it ties in and winds off the road, but they, Bob's like, gonna do that first thing in the morning.
Yes, and then they still have to do pavement striping as one of the other things that we were like, kind of done before we opened, but we should be good to go for Friday, so. And then I will let you guys know what time will...
And I was saying, oh yeah, our, well, it's just our conversation is, again, right now, we want to get them turned over to the public so that they can use them as summer winds down and we still have kids and things, but, you know, obviously establishing the grass is going to be a huge component of that, and so we do have some signage coming, the talking about like, you know, to keep off as once the seed gets down. You know, there was some initial hydro seeding done, to keep dirt in place as construction continued, but the actual seeding and all of that will still come. So our thought was is, but let's, you know, there's no reason to wait and not open them with just that, but we will plan like later in the fall when we have better grass established and all of that, some what we're going to call more like brand opening type of events that you kind of see, you know, a lot of times people do again, so that's why Kylie referred to it as a soft opening. So don't just think that the ribbon cutting is it. Obviously, we're super proud, we want the public to share with us, but it's just, you don't want the public to gather and, and be out on areas that just got fresh seeds. So that's why we're doing just a simple ribbon cutting, quote-unquote, soft opening, let the public use their parks, and then follow-up once, like I said, we have more grass and, you know, landscaping is, is further along, so.
Anything from council?
Recycling, are, you're going to put that on Facebook, I'm assuming? Because that's what, August 1st? Is that when they'll?
Because when we're eligible to start using it.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is this meeting being recorded tonight for the public?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's another one. So we have, we have had Wi-Fi challenges in this room, which has caused some of our issues with our recording as well. Jeff and Amy and IT worked through it last week, and we think we have found the culprit, so.
Of all things, it was the holiday light timer.
It was what?
The holiday lights timers, the timer here and the timer across the street, both try to connect to the Wi-Fi, 3,000 times a minute.
Just whenever we changed the Wi-Fi password, it was still trying to hit the whole one, and so that's what, it just kept getting bogged down.
Bogged down.
Yep.
That's good.
That'll do.
Good news.
All right, we have nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, go ahead, I already said it. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll make it.
Let's show a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.
All right, I have tried to send you to send you, sorry, so. For the council.
With buzzing.
I'll try it again.
Part of that would be.
Oh, yeah. As I say, the part of the scene, I'll try it on that. All right. I don't know. Yeah, okay, okay. So I wondered, okay, last, last year, I was like, oh, I have a love house. Later, I was like, no, I mean that back. So this is, I wanted to say, back. And then they get the driveway. Basically, now they want to build. They will.
I would have to listen to that.
Because they did, um, foot, the driveway. Well, we have, there's a lot of occupancy, someone by South Rand, but I'm a lot of occupancy, and then really, you know, they, nope, there's kidding, that's a temporary occupancy. We have a letter, yeah.
Right, and what I was thinking is, if you're doing that, I would kind of try to, there's that, so.
So I'm seeing it. Was that Friday? So that was, that's Amy who was actually on it. I don't, I don't guess I remember that. It was right Saturday, you're telling us that we already partied, and they're like, I mean, absolutely, that's the occasion, what is it? That was, that was, whatever, Mike's done back, and I just, we had it done, and then the next thing they do is, I told them about this, that's why we told them in the last year, whenever he started by sanctity, he said, that's why we, he's Brian Hunt, Brian Hunt specifically, was like, do these people know that there's a lot of seating, and she was very sure, like, I don't think I see that, I just think he's like, I, I don't know, like, we'll let everyone know, and I, and I, and I, and I, and I, and I, and I know they feel stuck. They do. Unfortunately. And it's not just, uh, their, our issue that's on, I'm not sure, I guess it's in their. Dry hydrant or something, there was something else.
Well, this she mentions, I wrote it down, some kind of substance, they look at, you know, but.